Mr. Finner, could you just acknowledge whether you can hear us, give a thumbs up or a wave? Or say hello? It looks like you can. Oh, well, he just turned his video off.
I actually was gonna ask if there was like a pipe broken somewhere because it's just...
Looks like it.
I had to irrigate it.
Is the water stopped?
No.
You should dig down.
It actually started flooding on Friday.
Well, it goes until we were barely on Friday and then it kind of stabilized.
Where's the source of?
Yeah.
Alright.
Right there, just randomly.
And it was absorbed quickly.
Right up here?
Yeah.
But you can't dig down and see?
There's getting busy.
I mean, there's no pipes there.
Must be a spring of some sort.
Don't say. Oh, yeah. A little microphone's gone.
True. It was just so weird.
What time? Five o'clock?
Just so much water and it's just been...
I am appalled at how much water there is. It's just like, it's so alarming.
How much are you getting from it?
What's that?
And get you two more soup? No, I mean, I tried going for dinner.
Yeah, so it's pretty bad.
That must be a stress relief.
And this was Tuesday morning.
Alright, I guess we're all here at seven o'clock, right?
Five o'clock.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Our team's going to Nelson's tomorrow.
Alright.
That's our next...
Really?
We're all ready to roll today?
Yeah, I think as far as I know, yeah.
Alright, everybody, it's a little bit after five and I'm gonna call this emergency meeting the Berry City Council order on Friday, July 14th. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
None for me, Mayor.
Any from council? Alright, hearing and seeing none. And I usually go through the introductions, but I'll just, for the interest of keeping things moving along and everybody getting back to their work, we'll skip that.
Everybody just pointing to their names now.
Yeah.
The only thing I could think of is if, I know people really wanna talk about item 8A, if we wanna maybe do the vote on B and C so we can finish, but it's up to you, but...
Um...
That's...
Either way, yeah, I think probably, it sounds like people mostly wanna talk about A first. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, so if we wanna...
Yeah. Where do you wanna move it?
Just do B and C and then A, that way...
Oh, like move it to the end?
To the beginning and do...
Just, we think that B and C are gonna be quick, right?
Yeah, so that way we can just finish the meeting with...
With the flood update?
Yeah.
Okay, well, um, okay, that's fine.
Oh, I see where you're at.
I thought you were saying that's the most important, you wanted it first.
I was just saying to get those, I think those will be probably quick motions, so that way we can get that business out of the way and then we don't have to forget to do it at the end of the night.
Alright, um, alright, so we have, uh, next item is visitors and communication. Are there any items for visitors and communication? Amanda Augustin?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Just spending a few minutes, as of a couple of hours ago, Pam Wilson and I, in a meeting with city staff and various relief organizations, have stood up a plan for volunteer intake and management to assist in flood recovery, starting tomorrow morning at 9:30 a.m. at the Aldrich Public Library. We are coordinating with city staff and we are coordinating with the folks who are doing assessments of homes and of structures and things like that. The intent is to give the hundreds of people we know who will be coming to Berry City this weekend to help a place, a centralized place to go, to make sure they have access to food and water and bathrooms, and also a way to get them to places that are needed rather than sort of wandering around the city looking for places to help. We are actively, I wanna just reassure the council that we're actively, again, working with city staff and working from the lists that they will be providing to make sure that volunteers are doing the safest possible work. There's been some conversation about making sure they're not engaging in any sort of mud removal, for example, as that has been deemed to be risky. So they will be helping folks move debris, helping get folks water as needed. I imagine we will have a variety of potential tasks that we are attempting to continue to list right now. But the short takeaway here, 9:30 a.m. on the front lawn of the Aldrich Library, we will have access to the interior of the Aldrich as well for bathrooms and air conditioning and so on and so forth for folks. Any volunteers who wanna come to the city should help, should go there first so that we can make sure we're coordinating effectively.
Thank you. Counselor Derry?
So if I have groups of individuals that are ready to rock out, how do we get that accomplished? I mean, I have different groups of individuals. Do you want them all to register individually?
Yeah.
Or is it possible to get a group? I mean, if I have a group of 50 individuals that are gonna come out, you know, do we want all 50 of those to come through your line? And then kinda, 'cause they're gonna wanna work together?
Yep.
So I just wanna know how that's gonna work, so that way I can direct those people tonight after this meeting to know what we're doing.
Yep. This plan is now about an hour and a half, two hours old.
Yeah, no, no, I'm looking at the email that got sent.
Yep, understood. My off-the-top, off-the-cuff answer to you is going to be, we are about to stand up a waiver for volunteers as well, so we would like everyone who is sent out to sign that waiver. That does not mean that every single person has to go through the line.
Right, okay.
One person can go through the line and say, "I have 20 people to go somewhere," while they're all signing waivers off to the side. We'll be traffic controlling that a little bit in place, but everyone who wants to sort of be directed out through this should come to that spot somehow.
Okay.
And if they have 20 people that wanna stay together, we will find a task that suits that. But communication will be key, letting people know. We also wanna make sure that folks aren't overextending themselves, that they are matched with tasks they're able to do. We have food and supplies coming in to equip folks with from a variety of different avenues, so the task tonight is gonna be getting it all on the same page and ready for 9:30 tomorrow morning.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
And if I could just add, I think just a description of some of the tasks that we'll do. We bought 12 boxes of contractor bags, so just having people sweeping up the loose silt, the loose dirt, that, you know, so we've asked for brooms, gloves, things like that to help that be put together, small debris that people can pick up. We're working on having, we'll have at least one, maybe two, half-ton trucks to go around with volunteers, so we can start loading bigger stuff into those vehicles as the vol- you know, so we were gonna have individual staff doing that. Now, if all of a sudden they have four or five people that are walking with the truck, they can start to pick up bigger material. So those are the kinds of things we're doing. As Amanda mentioned, the muck outs are separate from this, that's a bigger operation, so we have some light to moderate cleaning that's been identified, and then the people that show up will be doing that type of sweeping work, debris work, and frankly, trying to fan out probably to the areas of the city that the city has not been able to pay attention to because we're focused on the sort of the grand zero, but there, we know there are other areas in the city that have lighter to moderate needs that these volunteers will be very helpful for.
Yeah, and I apologize just to add to that, we will be adding sort of additional needs, I'm sure, as people come, report them to us from a variety of sources. So we will be sort of trying to be an information clearinghouse in addition to the assessment work that's being done. Yeah, taking that information and matching volunteers with appropriate tasks, again, within the sort of bounds that we've discussed previously and getting them, and getting them back out to where they can be helpful.
So all the people that filled out the city form, they're getting notified?
They all got the email. So we sent them an email today, this afternoon. It's been posted on Facebook and the website. So yes, everyone who signed up, there may be a lag here, we've been, we're intaking a lot of people, so we took the spreadsheet as we had it at whatever time that email went out, so there, you know, we'll try to fill those gaps in, but everyone who had submitted their form by the time the email went out received it. And it's also on social media, so, and the website.
And it's definitely going out and spread. I would also add, the AFL-CIO was gonna set up on the city, City Hall Park tomorrow. They're gonna be with us on the Aldrich lawn, so it's gonna be, everything is gonna be there. And again, food, water, supplies, making sure everyone gets a mask, making sure everyone has gloves, making sure everyone has appropriate boots and things like that. If they don't have appropriate boots, they are gonna be walking the city streets, making sure they pick up small stuff. We're gonna be matching that to make sure they are appropriate for what we're asking them to go out and do.
Thank you, this Counselor Derry.
Who's gonna be dishing out the agenda items as far as they go? Who's gonna be working?
I'm not sure I follow.
So who's going to be handing out the tasks? How are we going to differentiate the tasks? I'm just kind of asking some blanket questions. I mean, we're in the early stages.
Yeah, so certainly Pam Wilson and I will be there all day. I just was, just a few minutes ago, got off the phone with Reena Marshall, who's also going to be there, and Pam just got off the phone with Nancy Pope, who's also gonna be coordinating sort of the interior to the library support for bathrooms, air conditioning, folks who need to sit down, that kind of thing. We also just talked with a couple of folks who may be also doing some sort of just light orienting and things like that. We're still building this team, but those are the four people as of this moment who will be at those tents.
You need more people?
Coordinating in and out. Yes, I would say if there are people who feel that they, this is gonna be a high-information, high-speed kind of work. If there are people who feel like that is their wheelhouse, we could use a couple more people. But I think where we're gonna need the most people is to get out and do the stuff. And I think between us, we're gonna be calling a couple of other folks we know who are gonna be sort of ideal for the situation, who may not be physically in a place where they can go out and help, who are gonna be in that. So I am, for that reason, hesitant to like put out an all-call for us to help with admin, because I feel like we're adding a couple more people will be, will be okay. I would say the biggest need is for folks to come down, check in, and we'll get them out and helping in the city.
If you need help, you have my phone number.
Pam Wilson, I saw you had your hand raised.
Yeah, see, um...
Sorry, if you could just show folks online in here, especially this stuff.
The specific help that would be useful from city councilors is if each of you could send maybe one or two names our way of someone who is in your ward, who you know is available tomorrow, who you know knows the streets of your ward well, knows the rivers of your ward well, and kind of has a sense of what's going on. Therefore, if we do have a team that we are going to dispatch, if we have, say, a group of 10 people who are ready to go help with the debris removal on a street, I could say, "Okay, you're going to a street in Ward Two. I know if you get to Ward Two and all of a sudden you're not sure if you're on the right street, or you're not sure if you're at the address that you're supposed to be at, here is my Ward Two person who could be there and who could at least be available by text or by phone to say, 'Yes, it is a greenhouse you're going towards, you're in the right place.'" So if we had just a few names of not people who are doing the actual work themselves, but who are at their homes, in their place, but available to be almost like responsive runners going down to, "I need somebody at this intersection just to make sure that this volunteer crew is where they're supposed to be and they know what they're doing," that would be wonderful. This was one of the suggestions from the Waterberry crew that we just got off the phone with, is that they separate the city out into sections, they have a captain for each section, and there's communication between an initial organized central hub. It's a hub-and-spoke model, so that's what we are trying to organize on the ground right now.
And we're trying to anticipate that there are a lot of folks coming in who don't know the city, who haven't been here this week, who may not understand when we say, "Oh, this street's closed, go around here." So Pam just secured, thanks to city staff, a whole bunch of large maps that we'll spend tonight marking out closed streets on so that we can show people at the table and make sure they have that ability as well. But people, brains in the various neighborhoods would also be hugely...
So keep them in the neighborhoods. Don't necessarily send them to us. I want to know that there are a few people who could be runners in neighborhood sections to make sure that things are running smoothly and then report back.
How do we hold you? How do we send those names to you?
Email.
Email.
You can send them through city manager, he's been in constant communication with us.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Done.
Stephanie?
Go to the mic.
Thank you.
So they can hear you.
I wasn't sure if it was on the agenda to talk more, but there's some, you know, what's going on in the BOR as well?
Yeah, that'll be part of the presentation.
That's part of, okay, 'cause I didn't see the agenda, so we'll cover that.
Yeah.
Alright. Well, thank you for that, and it sounds like you have a lot to stand up in the next couple hours, maybe a few more questions on this?
I was just, are we standing stuff up on, I just, again, hour and a half, are we standing stuff up on Sunday, too?
Literally before we came up, I said to Pam, "We're going to have to figure out if we can do this on Sunday, too."
Yeah.
I hope so.
I've received questions about Sunday, too.
Yeah, and as have both of us. I hope so. That will be a conversation with city staff and city management and the Aldrich Library.
Makes sense.
Yes.
Right now, we're trying to work within the open hours of the Aldrich so that we impact the staff there as little as possible. Many of the staff have also had homes and businesses within their family networks that have been significantly impacted. So we are doing the best we can to get this up and running quickly and minimizing the impact that it has on other folks trying to regain their sense of normalcy. But we'll let you know as soon as we have a plan for that.
Yeah, and I would just add that there's weather on Sunday, so that might impact the opportunity as well.
Thank you, ladies.
We're absolute sure at 9:30 a.m. tomorrow morning.
Alright, well, we wish you luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in the morning.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Before we go further into the meeting, it's been, no, I'm good. It's been quite a week, quite. I think we've all experienced a broad spectrum of emotions, heartbroken for the city, so proud of how people and our staff are responding, and so hopeful for the future. But I'm not mindful of the fact that we are, as a city, one less. So I'd just like to ask the council to join me in standing in a moment of silence for Stephen DeVal. Thank you.
Well, said Tom, certainly the stress and anxiety of everybody and particularly all the hard work that every first responder's been put into this and volunteers has just been unbelievable, and we owe tremendous amount of thanks to the whole team. With that, let's see if we can fly through this consent agenda and let people get back to work. So we have, under the consent agenda, if there are no other items for visitors and communication, approval of the regular city council meeting minutes of Tuesday, June 20th. We have ratification of the warrants a week of June 28th, ratification of the warrants a week July 5th, ratification of warrants from the week of July 12th. I don't believe there are any licenses or rights other than...
I do actually have one, an entertainment license that was addressed in an off-week as far as council meetings were concerned. Paul Flint and friends did music in City Hall Park last Saturday, the 8th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and that just requires ratification as part of the consent agenda.
So ratification for that. We have approval of the property tax due dates for FY24, authorization of the manager to execute contracts for sludge removal, the Air Street Main Replacement, Authorization of the Vermont Community Sunscreen Dispenser Program, grant application and acceptance of the grant if awarded, and approval to move the Bursa Trust Funds to Community Bank. Community National Bank?
Nope, Community Bank.
Just Community Bank, okay. Alright, that's the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Second.
Alright, we've got plenty. Well, I'll give it to Lozak, Lozak on, and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Do we have any report from the city clerk of treasurer?
Just appreciation to my staff. We're, in many instances, we're the phone number that people are able to get to, and they have been fielding phone calls and giving out good information to people all week, so I'm very appreciative, so.
Thank you, Carol. Do we have any liquor cannabis control items? Okay.
No such luck.
I would echo the clerk's message. We've had just so much dedication from the entire staff. People are working outside their job descriptions to just go above and beyond, and just like any, like Winter Storm Elliot, which seemed big at the time, everyone has a role. Everyone has a big part in it, and it takes the whole team to do it, and it's just been great to be in the trenches with not only the people who are in this room now, but also the crews that we've seen working around the city. So it's no better group of people to be coming back with than the ones that work for Berry.
Any questions for the city manager?
How's the crew holding up?
Weary. So, yeah, it's been long days, long hours, especially for the folks who've been up in the EOC for not just Monday night, but last night. We had a crew there for quite a while. We've had people working long shifts in every department, and we're having people work, there'll be crews out this weekend as well for half-days on both days. So there'll be somebody working in the city the whole week to continue with the cleanup. So we're gonna make sure everyone has at least a day off this weekend. But, yeah, people are tired and we know that it's gonna be a marathon, not a sprint, so we're keeping that in mind as well. And I'm encouraging the department heads to, no one needs to be a superhero. We know that we're not gonna clean this up in one day or two days, so people should rest, people should see their families for dinner, people should, you know, go and sleep. So that's been my message to them, and I know that they're relaying it to their staff as well.
Any other questions?
Yep.
With that, that takes us to new business. So we have approval of the indefinite waiver of building and flood hazard permits and registration fees for any emergency repairs related to flood damage, and so...
Yeah, so this is tracking similar action that the council has taken during prior, unfortunately, prior similar emergencies, and this allows people to move forward with work. They still need to do the, go through the permit process, and they will do so on the back end. And it's strictly for building permits and flood hazard permits. This isn't a carte blanche for anyone to do whatever they've always wanted to do that the city has not let them do. So wanna be very clear about that. We are waiving the fees, the registration fees, and they will have to do the permit on the back end. This is just to help us expedite people trying to take care of their property.
So moved.
I would just, Janet and I were talking about it earlier, that the last time this was done, we did put a date range on it, that applications needed to be filed by a particular time. The last time, it was about six weeks. Janet and I thought maybe two months made sense, maybe to go to September 15th, just something that we're suggesting, that the applications need to be filed by the 15th of September to qualify for the waiver.
Rather than it sound like it's an indefinite stretch of the sun for a year.
Right.
You just want people to come talk to us and get your permits, knowing that the fees are not going to hold back.
It is, but I understand it's a temporary waiver and the idea is that start with two months and then can revisit it.
Yeah, if it turns out that, yeah.
Mask-wise zoning, electrical and public works permits are not included in the list?
We were, this was, I believe, was taken from the prior action that was done last time, so this is just tracking the prior...
Just the building permit and only the flood hazard?
Yeah, correct.
But all the other permits are gonna remain in effect?
Yeah, and the fees, I mean, they all remain in effect. This is just waiving the fees form.
And I can explain further. Right now, without an electrical inspector, most electrical applications for commercial structures are going to the state anyway, so we're seeing hardly any electrical applications. And given how our new unified development ordinance has written zoning permits, we're gonna see more building permit applications than we are doing.
Okay. So if somebody comes in the office and they wanna like get their building elevated above the base flood elevation, and they're looking for consult, their assistance from staff, you'll still be able to coach them through kinda how to do it, but they get the waiver of the fee and the paperwork for now, right?
Right.
Okay.
So flood hazard application, in that particular instance, there would be a $55 fee. So if we just say, "Look, we want you to talk to us and get this done."
Yeah.
You don't have to worry about $55. Building permit applications are raised on square footage. By waiving those fees as well, we get them to come apply and because there's so much money that's going to be going out the door to fix things. An incentive to get folks to talk to us, we thought would be great, like we did in 2011.
And this is consistent with what FEMA expects? There's nothing outside what FEMA expects in this action?
Correct.
Okay.
I spoke with the state flood lane manager today, and he thought this was a great idea. The repeat of 2011, said we're awful. Good job.
Thanks, Janet. Counselor Derry?
I'd like to see if we can give a 90-day date on that.
Yeah, actually, I'm just, I was gonna make the motion, but leave it, I'm fine with the waiver, but I'd like to leave the timeframe open-ended and give Janet and the manager authority to adjust the timeframe. Sometimes things happen, and 90 days may seem good tonight, but maybe, maybe it's not in a week, or maybe it's a shorter time, maybe it's a longer time. So I'm fine with waiving, I think it's absolutely appropriate to waive the fees, but I'd just like to give the staff and manager a little bit of flexibility in terms of the timeframe, and Carol?
Perhaps the motion could say, "The window will close with two weeks' notice," or something, so that the manager and Janet could say, you know, "We're now gonna," so that we don't end up with the, with people sort of stretching beyond. And that way, they'd have plenty of time to come in and see, just a suggestion. I know that that will make the state happier, too, if there's a, some kind of, yeah.
So Tom, it sounds like the motion will be...
Thanks, Carol. Seconded. Read my motion back, would you care?
Okay, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try. So approve a temporary waiver of building and flood hazard permit and registration fees for any emergency repairs directly related to the flood, up to 90 days, but subject to adjustment by the manager and the planning, permitting, and assessing director with two weeks' notice to the council.
I think we just took the 90 days out altogether and just subject to...
Two weeks' notice, okay, got it, alright.
Closing date subject to, or something like that, yeah, yeah.
Alright, so that's the motion. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
We have a motion by Tom, seconded by Darian. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Next up is an approval of indefinite moratorium on parking enforcement.
There is actually another motion that was in the memo, and I just wanna make sure we don't overlook it, having to do with, we know from past experience that people who apply for FEMA funding or SBA funding will need to gather documents that prove ownership and et cetera, that will include copies of deeds and tax bills and blister cards and maybe tax maps, and so we'd like to put a waiver on fees associated with any of those copies or researches that are associated to flood damage.
So moved.
Second. Second.
And once again, two weeks upon...
Well, that's kinda, that has, 'cause it's subject to flood damage, I would just leave that one open-ended.
Leave that one open, okay.
So we have a motion by Counsel Lozak, seconded by Counsel Sean Bell. Any further discussion on that? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Next is approval, yeah, that's the second agenda item.
Yeah.
Approval of a moratorium on parking meter enforcement through the downtown streets and parking lots to support cleanout and reconstruction efforts associated with the July 10th, 2023 flood event.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Stockwell, seconded by Counsel Sean Bell.
Quick point of discussion. Nicholas, could you just, for the record, explain to some folks why they still may see the meter folks out and about even though we are suspended...
You may see Dee and John out and about because they're conducting maintenance, they're making sure that the meters didn't sustain damage, they're making repairs if they did. So we have, I asked Dee several times, and she confirmed to me, they've issued zero tickets since the flood event, so...
The other thing is that they will be on the lookout for things like, "Please don't park at a fire hydrant," you know, those kinds of things. We wanna make sure that this is, this is a moratorium on metered parking spaces.
Yeah.
So, you know, use...
So the public should know if the street has a no parking sign or it shouldn't be there.
Right.
Right. This isn't, this isn't...
Right, this isn't carte blanche, things like...
Right, this isn't, you park in a clo- you know, North Main that was closed, you go and you park there, you're gonna get ticketed. This is, no other traffic conditions apply. This is your coming, parking in the back city hall, that's what I think.
Alright, so we have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Counsel Derry, that takes us to our last item on new business flood recovery update.
Thank you, Mayor, and there's a PowerPoint council on your desks, and thank you, Counsel Wazak. So going to slide two, just a brief timeline of the events. We received the National Weather Service warnings on Saturday, July 8th. The city issued a press release. And I should just mention, we will, this was finalized a few minutes before the council meeting, so we will post this on the website, on the flood website as well, for people who wanna have a copy of this at home. National Weather Service flood warnings came out Saturday, July 8th. We issued a press release to warn residents of the impending weather, and to let them know where updates would be coming, and that was on the website and our Facebook page, and just the usual cautions about what they might observe with flooding, with such an event. On the 9th, knowing that the forecast was not changing, we had crews on Sunday clearing the trash racks, coordinating with cleanup of the trestle, to make sure that our flood mitigation measures were ready for the storm. So we had crews in the city on that day to do some prep work. And then, early morning on Monday to around 3:30 PM, we were monitoring river levels, we were monitoring trash racks, the bridges, the known flood-prone areas, constantly. We had, we set up the emergent, our sort of emergency operations center at around 9:00 in the morning, and we continued to just make sure that our flood mitigation mechanisms were functioning, and they were. You know, there were still some troubling signs. The Stevens Branch by Burnham, we have a measuring gauge there, that's at four feet at 7:00 AM, six feet by 10:00 AM. So very concerning rapid increase in the water levels. And throughout the afternoon, water levels did continue to rise, but banks were holding, trash racks were working. We had a, you know, there was a, remember with the chief, fire chief, there was a twisted tea bottle at the banks of, by West Second, that was there at 9:00, and it was there at 10:00, and it was there at 11:00, and it was there at 1:00. And the water was at the same level, so we were, and it was raining, so we were concerned because it was still raining, but we were feeling okay, that's, at least it's not coming, it's, the twisted bottle's still there. So the twisted tea's still there. But obviously, that changed very rapidly. And at around 3:30 through the rest of the night, water levels, when that last cell came in with the heavy, heavy rain, that's what kinda broke the system. Our system would've worked really well, and probably would've if the rain hadn't been so heavy, but that heavy, heavy rain for such a prolonged period just put us over the edge. And we closed, I remember, we closed four, three streets and one bridge, and around 3:30, and we evacuated the alum, to Alumni Hall, because Public Safety Building was flooding, that the street, the areas there near there were flooding. And then very quickly after that, the system was just overwhelmed, and we ended up with what happened. So our flood mitigation measures worked really well for a pretty significant storm. This was just a monster storm, and the duration of it really, really did us in. So we, next slide, Counselor. So we, the morning, oh, I'm sorry, I think there was some information I didn't cover. We rescues, a fire department, police department, DPW rescues occurred through the night. We had 54 calls for service in the first 24-hour period. And the Red Cross Shelter, as you know, opened at approximately 3:00 PM. We opened in the basement, which is our usual spot where we open, and we had to expand to the gym level in the evening. We received busloads of people from Berlin who needed shelter, that caused us to expand. And the shelter did reach its capacity. It's down, last night it was down to about 35 headcount. It did reach its capacity of about 370 during the week. So many people were there. CV-DART was set up in the BOR with the kennel shelter as well, and they still have some animals with the people who are still at the odd. Next slide, damage assessments. So this is just high-level here, but all of our city facilities, besides the civic center, sustained damage. The Public Works Garage, WeLok Building, Public Safety Building, and City Hall, in that order of severity. So you'll see some pictures further down in the presentation. We, two loaders were significantly damaged as a result of rescue operations. They're currently not functional, which has led to us having to receive outside assistance for the cleanup recovery work. And then just citywide, just significant damage to streets, sidewalks, cloverts, just sort of the city's basic infrastructure. There's just damage throughout. And within the facilities, I should mention, there's been, you know, Public Works had just layers of mud throughout the building, you'll see in a picture. A WeLok Building's damage is limited to the basement primarily. Public Safety was damaged on the police side, they sustained some damage on the first floor and into the dispatch room. We had some heroic dispatchers who stayed there the whole night, trying to keep equipment as safe as they could, even as water was coming in. And City Hall, there'll be a picture, I believe, but the main damage was in the boiler room, engineer's office. We, the document, the vault was safe, but there is, and obviously you probably all saw the Opera House entrance, there's damage there as well. And, you know, I can't even begin to talk about the commercial and residential property damage, which is just extensive. People ask for estimates, we have no estimates. It's widespread, it's devastating for many people. North Main, between Beckley and Sixth are particularly hard-hit, but I don't, you know, I'm not, there's other pockets of the city, obviously, with similar damage. That just happens to be kind of the ground zero, so to speak, but we know that there's people outside that area that also are suffering. These are following slides are just some images that came from a couple of places. We've had some drone footage taken, and just even some staff pictures in here, just to show really the extent of what we're facing. You see some, Brook Street there, you can see actually the trash rack, as I mentioned, did its job. It retained a lot of debris. We just, it was just that the duration was, and the volume was just, was overwhelming. You can see here, by the Capstone Building, here just down the street. The next slide, that's right outside the Public Safety Building, looking out at the Salvation Army Building. You can see that's easily six feet of water there on the Salvation Army Building. And you can understand why Public Safety's been, was unreachable for the first two days of the storm. The, just brought a wide picture of some damage on the north end of the city. The next slide, slide... You can see North Berry Manor, again, some of that ground zero, as I was mentioning, the Berlin, the Berlin Street Bridge with debris there. This was, this actually became a challenge as well with the recovery, because we knew that we had a storm coming yesterday that could've been significant. And so we had to divert resources and assets to make sure that we didn't have another flooding event by clearing this and other pinch points in the city. The next slide, it shows you a picture of the Granite, Granite Street and the Labor Hall. We had some very serious rescues happening on this street, and as I think many of you know, the Granite, the Labor Hall was devastated by the storm. And then you can see Maple and Main Street there on the right, just a lot of water in that, in that area. Some damage outside the city, near the reservoir, Route 302 is not visible there, but it should be. And then some significant damage on Merchant and Warren Street, in an area where our crews had done significant work recently. But this is...
The dam, everything's okay with the dam and the reservoir?
Yeah, dam and reservoir are fine, yeah. And the water, wastewater treatment facility was okay. It sustained some superficial damage, but operationally it was, was okay. Next slide is the Public Works Garage, and you can see there, that's pretty overwhelming damage in there. And so just a lot of loss here for the city in terms of tools, equipment, in this garage. And Railroad Street, a slide that happened on Monday night, and you can see a similar situation by the Public Safety Building. This is behind, by the police garage where the cruisers are parked. This is where the water actually came into the building, through this, through the garage, the garage base. Slide 11, just the current and ongoing risks. So landslides are a concern. We've, have 14 identified landslides since the flood, four directly impacting structures, including a 1-6 unit condo, and, which has been evacuated. There have been two rescues from affected structures and landslides, and two rescues from affected vehicles. That's the Beltline landslide that occurred. So we are, we're very proactive on this. We've been working with an engineer, with a geologist. We've gotten some drone footage, and we've, I know, the team here, Janet, Joe, Keith, and Brian in particular, were, looked at the footage, the coverage with the engineer, with the geologist, and they actually, I think with Chief Cushman, did site visits after reviewing the pictures that we'd obtained. So that's what led to an evacuation. We feel, what we've heard back is that there was no other imminent dam, danger at the landslide locations. We're obviously continuing to monitor, and we made that assessment, knowing that there was rain in the forecast for yesterday, so... But this continues to be a concern, the more water we continue to get, this will continually be on our radar. The muck contains potentially hazardous material, so that's why we're waiting for trained relief organizations to get here to help us remove it. There needs, you have to have equipment, masks, to be able to be in there cleaning it up. So that's why we're, we've been, we haven't deployed volunteers to help with that, because it's, we wanna make sure that they're doing it with, with trained professionals.
It's online for when those people are coming?
Yeah, I believe, many of them are arriving this weekend from Southern Baptist and Team Rubicon. So they will be here, and they will be, they will start deploying, they will start training. We have, we have a team from UBM that started to do assessments. So that's the team that Amanda referred to. They've done assessments of the muck outs, and they've done assessments of the lighter to moderate cleanouts. So that work is ongoing. Another current and ongoing risk is just the additional rain in the forecast. As I mentioned, we had to divert resources yesterday, and I know there's more rain in the forecast, and so this is gonna, until we get to a more comfortable spot, this will just continue to be something that will be a risk for us anytime there's rain in the forecast. And something we know has been difficult, but the boil water notice remains in effect, at least through the weekend. So we've had great partners who have made sure we have adequate water at the auditorium, and we have more people scheduled to bring water through the weekend and into early next week. So really hope that if anyone's in need of water, they go up to the auditorium. Boiling water is still safe, you can, you still use it to shower and wash dishes and all those things.
I'm sorry, not wash dishes?
You can rinse it with clean water.
Right.
So rinse it with the boiled water, but you can clean it with the tap water.
Yes.
Yes. Or you can use a dishwasher, as we do. But you can, you can still boil it, and it's still safe, is the takeaway. But we do hope, I know Brian and the plant staff is working really hard, we hope to have, be able to take the samples early next week, and usually that's a 24-hour turnaround. So I think the light, there's a light at the end of the tunnel on that, we just hope people can hang on for a couple more days, and we wanna make sure the water is safe before we lift that boil water notice. This is just the next two slides, some pictures of some of the landslide issues around the city, that we are tracking and monitoring. As you can see, some structures are impacted, and of course, the concern is that there's other structures nearby. So this is a very acute risk that we're staying on top of. And the final slide, or I think two more slides, but next slide, is just our priorities for the next few weeks. It's really, it's, we know what it is, we just know it's gonna take time and resources. We need to clear streets, they've made tremendous progress on the north end, on Main Street. And so, once we're able to clear areas, we're gonna be able to start fanning out. And from there, the damage is less, and so we'll be able to move more quickly through the other parts of the city that need attention. But they've made tremendous progress on the north end with that street closure, which we thank people for respecting those closures, and teams will continue to clean there, and then they'll start fanning out citywide. We know the picking up of debris and mud is a big priority. We have three dumpsters deployed, I think that number's actually grown now, we've had additional dumpsters come in, and there's at least two more of the big ones that were in front of Nelson's underway. So we are, we're getting better, we're getting more resources in for trash removal. We're gonna start deploying those to different parts of the city as we see the needs shift, but we know that that's a big need for our residents. And eventually, what we'll do is, you know, if people can bring things to the dumpsters, that's great, we'll bring the dumpsters to people eventually, as also. And then finally, we're gonna have, once we can divert crews from the cleanup, we're gonna be able to just go around and pick it up. So that's the city's commitment, it's gonna take a little bit of time to get to that point, but we know that that's what we have to do.
I'm sorry, just wanted to add, I know Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District has come into the city and is down at Rotary Park to accept items that can't go in the dumpsters. So that's hazardous materials, it's paint, it's batteries, it's large appliances. Do you have an idea, Jeff, as to when they're going to be there? I know they were setting up today, but...
We're setting up this afternoon, we have pallets to set things on, and it's realized. It's in the shelter in Rotary Park, I believe they're starting tomorrow or more, but they'll be ready to go.
Well, friends who live near the landfill will certainly appreciate that.
Yeah. So, and we'll get that on the website, that's, that'll be updated as well. We have a, we're starting, the relief organizations are starting to get people in and to train people in, so we're gonna start to see more of them out in the field in the next couple days. And then a multi-agency resource center will be opening up in the BOR, beginning tomorrow, from 9:00 to 5:00 PM. This is operated by the Red Cross, it'll include FEMA representation, they'll have food, cleaning supplies, water, additional supports. This will also become a place for volunteers as well, once they're set up to do that. So that'll be, that'll be a place also where people can come in to request assistance once they are set up and operating. Yep. So the volunteer opportunities, we covered earlier at the meeting, so I won't go through the call that went out today, the information's on our website and on Facebook. And as I mentioned, people who volunteer through the city will also be connecting them to the Red Cross via the multi-agency resource center for additional opportunities to support. And I just wanna say, I know there's been a bunch of people who've been eager to jump in, and we know that it's one of the great things about Berry. And I know it's been hard to wait until we've been ready for them, but we've been, we've been doing it because we wanna assure safety. We were, you know, it didn't look exactly the way it did on Monday, yesterday, but we were still in an emergency situation, trying to avoid additional flooding from the storm. So we are appreciative of people's patience, we're glad they'll be able to help tomorrow, and there'll be plenty of opportunities for them to assist in the weeks ahead, so... But it was great, the first calls that came in were, "How can I help?", which was really hard.
City Manager, thank you.
Thank you.
And Counselor, would you join me in a round of applause for everybody who's just... Just unbelie, it's unbelievable.
So, just a couple. Capacity, obviously, there's a lot of silt around the city. How much capacity does the city have left, and what's our plan? I mean, it doesn't look like we have a lot.
Yeah, there's not, I know, Brian or Joe, do you have additional information, or you've been tracked?
I don't know, I'm out, I don't expect the hillside, we have more capacity there, but right now we've spent a lot of red, so it's come in, and it's hard to, and you're manager, once it dries out, we'll have more space there, so we'll just stop by on the firewall street, and might end up having to drug it twice, but it's, it's just not down yet.
Yep, and you're not, so you're not concerned about?
We are, but I think we'll, I think we'll have more, once it dries out.
Gotcha.
We have a better handle tomorrow, and I think we're around the city, we'll process that.
And then, how are we asking folks, in terms of the debris? I mean, what I've seen is that obviously, there's usually items in basements?
Yeah.
So they end up outside, you can't really access the basement, you can't adequately clean the basement until those items are out. You see a lot of them piled up alongside the road, because right now, literally, if you call, you can't get a dumpster. So even if a resident wanted a dumpster...
Right.
They're, they simply can't deploy one. So are we, are we providing any sort of instructions, you know, to put it roadside, but not sidewalk side, to put it, to keep it on your own property? I mean, I think that's, as I look at the recovery and the cleanup, I think that's one of the issues that is, is gonna be most challenging.
Yes, absolutely right, Counselor. So our guidance to people has been to please place it on their property for now, so we can keep roadways clear, we can clean roadways. So keep it on your property, the city will pick it up. The city will pick it up eventually. And we will, like I said, we'll either bring dumpsters near, near people once we can start deploying them throughout the city. Or at some point, our crews will start going around to, to pick it up. So the best thing to do right now is to leave it on the, on your property and, and we will, we will eventually pick it up for you. But keep it out of the roads so that they are unobstructed.
Thank you.
We also have a couple of trash haulers that are going to come around night and nights this weekend with their dump trailers and they'll load them in and try to get it out there.
Yeah.
So you'll see those pouring out all cycle as agreed and tiny trash hauler will leave the, they did it in localities.
Yep.
So people can add them up. So we're going to try actively getting those out.
Yeah, we, we just, a few minutes before the meeting, we posted a map of where that trash hauler will be focusing this weekend. And so those, that, that'll be focused on that ground zero area, Beckley, that triangle by North Main. They'll be doing Summer Street between, is it, it's Maple and all the way down the rest of Summer Street, Cliff Street, Jefferson and Brooklyn Street. So they will be, so we put that map out. So residents in those streets start putting out their debris. And that will be the first focus for this trash hauler these first, these next three days. Monday, Tuesday, whenever that person's done with those streets, we'll, we'll do the next round of streets.
Got you.
And we'll keep that updated.
Super. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Stokel?
So the stuff that people are pumping out of their basements, that's stuff that people should not be dealing with in terms of cleaning it up? Like the sludge that comes out, the water that comes out is one thing, but the sludge that comes out is another?
Yeah, I mean, the sludge, we've, we've put out some, some guidance on the website. You know, the, the sludge is probably best handled by professionals and I'll turn to the team here too. I know there's some, some guidance that we've gotten from the state, but yeah, it's, it contains potentially hazardous materials. So it's, it's best to do that with a mask and protective equipment. And I don't know, Joe, Keith, if there's anything else to add to that.
So if there's no fuel oil associated in your floodwater in your basement?
Yeah, yeah, that's better up here.
Thanks, Joe.
So if there's no fuel oil in your basement, you feel free, we've already checked with DEC on this and feel free to go ahead and pump it. If there is fuel oil, it should be assessed. We do have hazmat crews from the state of Vermont here that have been coming out to do that. They do have some remediation methods to do that so they can take the fuel oil off the top of the water and then continue to pump. And that is a, that's a standard practice for flood zones. So we have been doing that. Chief Cushman's been running those pump crews and I'll let him check.
Yeah, just a little bit more in depth on that. With, with the floodwaters, it was picking up debris, oil, kerosene, diesel, gas from everywhere. So when we say that there's no, that there's no fuel oil in that water, that, we're not saying there's, there's no sheen. I mean, if there's a sheen, pump it. If there's a separation of the product, the hydrocarbon from the water, they're recommending that it can still be pumped down to two inches in the basement, at which point it'll be on the property owners to have that, that pumped by a qualified contractor, which they'll, they'll take it to, to a secure facility at that point.
So for homeowners who are pumping, you know, and what's the recommendation? They should be in touch with you? Where do they go for help?
If they see something more than just a sheen, then yeah, reach out. If they're unsure, simplest thing is to reach out and we can come in and take a look. But like Deputy Chief Faldsworth mentioned, the state hazmat crews have been extremely responsive and they've been a huge asset to us through, through this duration of this cleanup. And they have, they're on an on-call basis at this point. They're not in the city, but their resources are still there if we need them.
Chief Cushman, will the multi-agency resource center, will they have things like pumps and dehumidifiers that can be resourced out to people who are loaned out to people who might need them or?
Many of those, many of those groups do have, have the mold mitigation equipment, yes.
And, and we purchased, we purchased just six some pumps, I believe, that we'll start deploying with teams that are helping with that, with that cleanup as well.
So just to expand your, your question, obviously if your fuel oil tank has upended, you don't want to be pumping it yourself. There will be, unless your tank was absolutely empty, which is unlikely. And that's one of the issues that we're seeing now around the neighborhoods. It's summertime. So most folks, you know, to save money, when winter is sort of over, they let their oil run down to 50 or 100 gallons and they don't call for another delivery. So unfortunately, when you have 100 gallons or less in a 275 gallon tank with five feet of water, it will, it will float. And likely, if it's floating, it will likely upend. So certainly if your tank has upended, do not attempt to pump it yourself. You know, get it evaluated. They'll pump it down as the chief said, they'll pump it down to two or three inches until, so they'll leave a separation, you know, the oil will sink, the water will float and they'll pump it, pump the water out and then they'll pump the oil out after the water's been pumped out. It, it won't mix together, but if you see your oil tank is upended, just don't chance it. Yeah, don't chance it. And they're right there. I mean, the guys are, they're around and in a situation like that, they'll be there in no time. Thank you.
Mr. Duhon?
Where would somebody find a vehicle that might have been swept away? I, I was asked that today by, by a constituent.
There's, there's an outside, a task force from, I think it's Connecticut that, that's in state and they were doing river evaluations.
Saw that today.
And, and they were, they were looking for abnormal items that may be in the river. Many, many vehicles have been found in there. I would also say that, I'm sorry, the auto clinic removed many of the abandoned vehicles that were on, in the streets. And the auto clinic's located in South Berry and they're, they're easily found on the web. So that, that might be a place that people might look to see if, to, to reach out to, to see if they had towed one of those vehicles. And that was, that was important to remove those vehicles from the roadway so that the street crews could get in there and begin cleaning up the, the mess.
Also, our drone footage is zoomable. So we actually took a look at the, the river byways to take a look at it too. So we really hit it on all fronts to make sure that we were covering it. And we had a great response from VSP, AOT and UVM actually. So they had a fixed wing drone in here. So we have very good aerial footage of all those, the reservoir, the spillway, the dam, right straight through to the wastewater treatment plant. So we really cut it, covered it from A to Z.
Just one more question. I was walking around First, Second and Third Street today and, you know, people are out. They're trying to fix things as best they can, but most of their lawns and some of their porches are covered in sludge. They should just leave that and wait for someone to come by?
That'll, that'll be a great question. That likely the, the faith groups that are out and the volunteers, when it was mentioned about their protective equipment that they, that they'll be wearing, they'll have respirators, they'll have Tyvek suits. And when they're out, they're going to be going door to door. They anticipate each crew, one crew can do one house a day. And this will be a long process.
Yeah.
But there's, there's, I think, six or eight crews that, that are currently, if not here, will be here by the weekend. So it's not going to happen overnight and patience will be there.
We did receive resources from VEM though. We've seen 12,000 cleanup kits. So basically they're a bucket with gloves, masks and all the stuff for personal protective items. So Pastor Malin is going to be doling that out. He's going to be creating a drive-through. We also get two tractor trailers of drinking water, which is all hosed in the BOR right now. So today we received five tractor trailers all at once. So they kind of got up into it, but it was pretty impressive to watch them get right in there. So we do have the resources. We had a phenomenal response from AOT and VEM. I think we had what, 14, 18 dump trucks here and tractor trucks and...
Yesterday we had six dump trucks on it.
Yeah, and if I, I should have mentioned this if I may, Mr. Mayor. We, we've, our municipal partners have been absolutely terrific. We have sweepers and trucks from Burlington, South Burlington, St. Johnsbury. The town has offered, Berry Town has offered drivers this weekend. So I just want to say that our Vermonters are pitching in in amazing ways and municipalities are sending, already strapped themselves, just resource wise anyway, they're sending people our way. It's, it's been a tremendous response from our colleagues.
We have four separate contractors that have been helping with the work also.
Yeah.
So we know that Vermonters are strong. We know that Berry's strong, but people break too. So are we doing anything for people's emotional support? Is there any, anywhere for them to call or?
For our staff?
Well, not only for our staff, but for our residents. I mean...
Yeah. So the Vermont Labor Council is going to have emotional support resources available at their event, 12 to 3 at City Hall Park. They will have people there. And, and I know that will be, also be a resource at the mark. Yeah.
Okay, that will be part of the resource center?
Yes, correct.
Right, perfect.
Yep.
One last question. Has Berry ever thought about some kind of warning alarm for when the river gets too high? It was brought to my attention by a constituent over the last couple of days of some kind of alarm system when we have such a flash flood essentially, where Main Street is just coming down with water and people just don't know to go.
Yeah, I, I think this is a, this is something we've struggled with even before the flood, right? Even getting out of boil water notice has been a challenge, right? So there's, the way people get information these days is just all over the place. So some people are on Facebook, some people are on websites, some people getting it in the paper. And, and some people are on BT alerts and some people on all, on all four of those systems. And the problem is that there's people who are none of them. And so, you know, getting the information out uniformly is, is a challenge. I, I think we've talked about, you know, and I, I think I talked about this with the council in my interview, that my prior company, we had a, we had a text message system that was specific to the, to the company, which had tremendous reach to the employees. You know, the, the same challenges apply there though, that some people don't have cell phones. And so that's, I think we're going to look at what the best ways to do it are. I think BT alerts is a great system, but even myself setting myself up on it, I'm not sure if I set it up to get all, sometimes I set it up to get too many alerts and so it's easy to ignore them when you really need to look at them because I'm getting alerts from counties very far from here. So I don't have an answer for you, counselor, but I think we know that we need to comprehensively think about how we communicate with people and keep up with the way people get information.
I know I wouldn't get an answer, but I wanted to at least, you know, bring it out there for discussion.
It's absolutely something that we have to, we have to evolve because the way people get information is just very different. We've, we've, you know, we've talked about investing and improving the website, but a lot of people don't look at the website. So, you know, dumping money into a really fancy website might not make sense because a lot of people just, it's not where they go for information these days. So we know that it's something that it's, it's an ongoing challenge. It was a challenge before this and this obviously highlighted that it could be a very, it could have very dangerous consequences.
I think it's a, it's a good question. And definitely there's going to be a lot of postmortem after things have settled out and lessons learned because I suspect this, this isn't going to be the last flood that Berry sees. And every, every time we go through this, it's an opportunity to get a little bit more resilient, a little bit better, a little bit of, build, build those systems.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sure we'll have those conversations.
I thought you were talking about an audible alarm. Like you seriously, that used to be...
I was actually talking about...
Oh, okay, that's how I understood your question.
A constituent brought it to my attention.
I don't think that's a bad idea at all.
I mean, they have a blaring alarm that when it goes off, you know that it's time to, to, to beat feet. You gotta go.
Seacoast is pretty common, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, I'm from, from Nashua originally. We, in, in Boston, we have some of those. And so it was something that somebody had brought to my attention. And I said, you know what, at the very least, we can, we can talk about it and see what we can do.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that's necessarily a bad idea. I mean, we, and I realize some folks may not have known, they, maybe they don't follow social media. There could be a lot of reasons, but we certainly had a lot of advance warning. At around 4:50, I drove down Burnham Street because I, I know the numbers. We put them there, so I know the numbers on the block wall. And we were running about seven and a half feet. I couldn't see the seven, seven was gone. I made the corner on Burnham Street, stopped for a moment by the resource to speak with someone. And when I tried to come through my own property, the water was three feet deep and up to my doors of the truck. Threw it and, I mean, it was so fast, that's what I couldn't. And even by the time I got to Main Street, so I backed out of my own property, went down Granite and by the time I got to the other end of North Main, it was a foot and a half on North Main. It was N coming from the Aldrich as well. So it was, I think an audible alarm would be a good idea. I think in terms of your communication, Nicholas, I think the department's communication, certainly public safety, I, I thought that was fine. I mean, certainly knew something was coming. I just wasn't prepared for how quick it happened. But your communication, not only pre, but throughout the event, considering everything that public safety and the staff was going through, I, I thought the communication has been fine. It's, sometimes you have to look, you have to go to the city webpage, but the information was always there. So thank you for that.
We did deploy out the city message board too. We figured that was the best spot was on, up on the Belt Line coming in to the city. And we plan to do an additional board. So we do have other things and plans in the mix. It's just a matter of when we can purchase those.
Thank you for all your work, guys.
Question for...
So Buden, you had a question?
I, just out of history and since Jeff's here, didn't we have an alarm system on Main Street decades ago?
It did. There was a, there was a siren on top of the Altory and one on top of Allen and Mundy. It was just, you know, the regular siren. And that was sort of a emergency. Very antiquated.
Was that part of the Civil Air Defense?
I didn't, I'm not that old.
I see two interest rates online. I'll start with Jen Lawrence.
Oh, no, that's not, that's, that's the mouse.
Oh, that's the mouse, Amy Gelford.
Hi, I just wanted to tell people if they needed that information about the cleanup procedures, like the, the pumping out in the oil and that sort of thing. The Agency of Natural Resources has that on their website. They set up a special website. It's anr.vermont written out.gov/flood. So anr.vermont spelled out.gov/flood. So they've got some fact sheets about things like the pump out and some other issues. They also have a couple of things for reporting non-emergency issues. Obviously, if you have an emergency landslide issue, that's a 911. But they are collecting information for the geologists who are going out and doing site visits around the state for, for potential hazards. So I was wondering for the city, you know, the manager mentioned damage to things like roads, sidewalks, that sort of thing, you know, when we get things more cleaned up and, you know, we can see more things, you know, my street looks a little different than it used to in some spots. Is, is a report to Sea Click Fix the app, is that the best way to go on that? Obviously, we don't want to overwhelm the DPW with, you know, non-emergency kind of stuff.
I, I, I don't think we should go to Sea Click Fix at this point. You know, we will, we'll create an intake process. Right now, you're saying 2-1? Yeah, 2-1-1 has also had its issues. I mean, I, I think, I know Brian and Joe are doing a citywide assessment this weekend. We'll be doing more vigorous citywide assessments with FEMA when their, their actual teams are in town. So I think we're going to have a good sense of it. I think, you know, Amy, that's a great question. I think for now, if people have issues, they can, they can send them to me and I'm funneling them to the departments as, as we can. But I, I feel confident that we're, we're going to be going street by street here. After, now that we have a, a better handle on that, that north end damage, we're going to be able to start fanning out.
We were able to track the streets that were damaged in, in the EOC. So we have a very good map right now that we'll utilize that and go through. And as we get down through, we'll have our initial FEMA assessment and then we'll have to do a detailed of those areas that are affected. And that's where Janet and the rest of the staff, I would go in. We'll, we'll document it. go in. We'll, we'll document it. We'll probably GPS it, and then we'll photo that damage. And that's what, so Dawn and I had a preliminary conversation with a concerned citizen who was familiar with the process. So we, we had a good education session. And so we're pretty comfortable. And in 2015, we learned a lot through the process. So I think we're, between Janet and I and, and Counselor Lozad, I think we can really navigate this pretty well with the help of FEMA. They're here, and they've already reached out. So we, they're going to help us along. They're not going to trip us up, so.
So if somebody sees a hazard out there, like a sinkhole former or something, is dispatched the, the, that's the place to call, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thanks. And I did want to say, the, there was a team from UVM that was going door to door in my neighborhood. I'm not in the worst hit end of the north end. I'm on a higher elevation area, but there were some groups from UVM who on behalf of FEMA were going around knocking door to door and doing, you know, they came and looked at my basement, that sort of thing. So, so if folks here knock on the door, it may be them.
Any other questions, Counselor Stockwell? Yeah.
So the assessment, so for people who are living in a potential landslide, how do you know it's going to be reasonably safe? Someone was complaining to my wife, just saying.
So we, we had, we, we identified them through the drone footage that we got. People have been reporting them. They've been good about reporting them. We, we observed some of them. So we've, we've reviewed all that footage with a geologist. And, and the Chief Cushman and the geologist visited. I don't know if you visited all of them, but you visited?
Yeah, we, I started with a, with a engineer from FEMA.
Engineer, yeah.
And we were just looking for, is it safe for the, the buildings around? Yes or no? And, and then today, the geologist came in and dug into it deeper.
So when this all started, we get the reports, I had put the ticket in for a geologist to come here. So we had already had that wheels in motion, knowing that the geologists want to see the drone footage and everything else. So it, it, it built onto itself. So they were able to identify through the drone footage, other things that were missed, that had not come to a surface or had not slipped as much. So they were actually, and Janet had met with them as a team effort here. And so, and it was stuff that we're like, we wouldn't have caught. So it was very beneficial. So we know now where to look for and that type of stuff.
And, and Counselor Stockwell, I'd say that we, we did have to evacuate one, one building. There were, there were two rescues in structures. The other landslides that, that we're aware of, the four, the other balance of the 14, we've gotten clearance and, and those people are safe. The structures around them are safe. So we're going to obviously keep watching them, and as forecasts change, you know, we'll be on top of them. But we've, we have evacuated the people that, that we know to be in a dangerous situation.
Thank you.
Yep.
That was very helpful.
I think one thing that really stood out to me, compared, at least just from observing images on, in the media, is it seems like Barry had more erosive damage, and Montpelier was more inundating, inundation damage. And that, that erosive damage is just much harder to predict, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and to recover from. So hopefully, we can get our fair share of balanced media coverage and, and resources from the federal and state government. And excited to see the Resource Center set up and the volunteers being deployed safely this weekend. Anything else?
I just go, and this might be a question beyond us, but I, you know, I was working with a business today, yikes, and they're not covered with flood insurance because they're not in the flood plain. Yet they're right next to the river. And I mean, it would kind of, hello. So, you know, that was one of the questions today was, you know, how are we going to improve and what can we improve? And I don't think that it's an us level, but I think the conversation needs to be, be had, especially because floods are more frequent, and they're worse than they have been. So I, another just discussion point, not for today, but for, you know, a better day.
Yeah, I think we, it's, it's a, we, we have to take it as an opportunity to learn and get better and get safer for the next time, because these, these events are becoming more frequent. So we, we'd be doing a disservice to our residents in our city if we, if we don't. So I know that once we're able to stabilize, that, that's going to be one of our priorities, is how, you know, our, our flood mitigation mechanisms worked really well up to that limit where they were overwhelmed. So what can we learn? Where was the damage? What can we learn about how to prevent that damage in the future? So I, I think it's, it'll be incumbent upon us to use this as a, as an opportunity to learn and to prevent, prevent it.
Jen?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to help you understand some of that in the flood hazard world, those folks that are actually in the, that are actually in the flood zone and have a federally insured mortgage are required to have flood hazard insurance. But you can live in the floodway or the flood hazard zone and not have a mortgage, and your insurance company will always highly recommend you to have insurance, but you're not required to.
Right.
So it's for, things for people to think about personally. Just wanted to give you a little bit of background on that.
Certainly.
Who has to and who can?
Versus who can as well.
I'm sure there are some folks who are denied insurance. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a larger conversation.
It's expensive.
It's very expensive.
Very, very expensive.
Counselor Buden?
Yeah. Janet, were you here when we were doing our flood maps back in the day?
Team? Yes.
Okay. It's probably too soon to start talking about that. And.
Yes, it is, period.
Never mind.
So ironically, it's not too soon. They're already looking at changes. They've been looking at changes over the last eight months. And so getting some of our drone footage that we've got, thank you for your drone footage. I'm going to inundate anybody I can. The sad part is, I think, we, from 1985 to 2013, we had a much larger flood plain. The 2013 flood zone became a little bit more narrow. And I think what's going to happen is, because essentially, this was like the 500-year storm, is it's going to take up more real estate in, in Barry City again.
So we're talking about homeowners that are going to have to, I mean, that, that's going to increase their insurance.
Potentially. But that's all to come. It's all to come.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, Janet.
So in terms of upcoming business, I think the, the plan is just to meet as needed for emergency response, so council business doesn't get in the way of what staff needs to do. And, and then, but I do know we may have some urgent items that we just have to deal with. And so that's what we'll do. Anything else you want to preview for us on upcoming?
No, I think we'll, we'll, we'll do an assessment here of things that are, you know, that are timely and forthcoming. I think pretty much all the department heads have been single issue focus on response. So I think once we can all think about the other parts of our jobs, we'll, we'll have some things that will become timely, like the sludge contract, for example, for Brian. I know he was waiting for that. So, but, so there may be things like that, that, that become timely.
We're certainly going to pivot everything for the next year and a half, I suspect.
We'll be focusing exclusively on recovery going forward.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think we should. I don't, you know, even as it comes, you know, we had a brief conversation about this. What I would like to see on the agenda is that any remaining ARPA funds that are not committed, and I realized that, you know, we had some projects where we said, look, we will fund it. This looks like a good project. I think everything's changed now. And I, and not knowing what the cost to the city and the residents is going to be, I mean, this is significant. This is not 2011.
Right.
This is at least five times worse. I've never seen anything like it. And, you know, we, we've been, from my properties, and I am fortunate to have full insurance, and I'm fortunate to have resources. And I have a commitment to our commercial and residential tenants, but I've never seen anything like this. We have been hauling sludge and pumping and hauling dirt out of parking lots. I don't know. Nicholas, how much do you think was on Metro Way? I mean, figure, figure nine acres of volume times two feet. That's how much was there. We filled the Bonacorsi lot, then the city was kind enough to let us use their lot. Now we just have to stockpile it. This is going to be significant. And what I'm most concerned about is, you know, on Main Street, it's not horribly expensive to clean up a basement, but it's expensive, and it certainly is discouraging. If you had inventory in the basement, that's a different story. I'm concerned about the number of folks who rent or own who don't have insurance. So I've already spoken to the administration about having some sort of small business loan. We'll address the individuals. We don't understand the scope yet. Having some sort of small business loan quickly obtainable, not, in 2011, we did it with VITA on a different scale. And so I've already spoken to the administration and the governor about possibly doing that again. But what I'm, you know, again, I, I just want this council to be focused like a laser, and I know we will be on recovery and helping people and making sure nobody falls through these cracks. You know, some people are going to lose everything.
People have lost everything.
There's no worse feeling than sitting in this seat and feeling like you failed someone. And so I think, I think we just have to be solely focused on recovery and, and advocating for our citizens, advocating for our businesses every chance we get. I hope we do. And speaking of flood insurance, I have to go meet my adjuster, seriously, at 47 North Main at 6:30.
I'll, I'll, I'll say that as your roundtable. Next up, Counselor Stockwell.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, all of you. You're doing, Danell Dexter, Superman hero shit.
As I walk around the city, I'm just struck by the loss. And I don't know how many of the houses can be restored or will be restored. And I see some for sale signs going up already. People are just like, they're done. So, yeah, I, I think we have to focus on recovery. And it sounds like we have, though, a ton of resources that Nicholas and others are already putting together. And we have a center coming up. So I think we have some ways to go forward. And I think we're going to have a ton of volunteers, which seems really good. That's it for me.
Counselor Derry?
Just like everyone, I'm really deeply saddened by all the things that are going on. Someone really close to me has lost everything. Their house, their clothes, their toothbrush. They really have nothing. And yet they're still out in the community volunteering, making sure that people and businesses can get and do the things that they need to do. And it just warms my soul to see these things going on and people coming together, because this is what we need to do. We need to continue to be safe and be strong and be very strong. And I'll end with that. Thank you.
Mr. Shumow?
Yeah, I've gone around, not quite as thoroughly as some, pedaling around on my bicycle. And I've been just heartbroken seeing how much we have lost as a community, and just how much so many people have lost and maybe don't even know what that amount is. It's, I don't know how you recover. I really don't.
This was?
Yeah, some good news. The Aldrich Library survived miraculously, did not suffer very much damage. So the Aldrich is still, is going strong, and they were able to open up soon after the flood. And also, we were scheduled to have some finalists for the new Aldrich Director come in early next week. And we spoke to the finalists, and they are both still very excited to come to Barry, very excited for the Aldrich. And they also offered to, we didn't take them up on it, because it's, you know, they need to do their things to prepare, but they both offered to come early and help volunteer and clean up the community. So that was just really nice to see. And then also, I got in, you know, it's been a very hard week. It's, this coming week's going to be hard as more damage is found out. So I talked to city staff and I reached out to Ben and Jerry's. And Ben and Jerry's is going to come to a free ice cream day next Saturday, the 22nd, at the city pool from 12:30 to 2:30. The city pool will be free that day, too. And we're going to coordinate with FEMA and other folks to have tables set up there, so folks can have their questions answered and have access to resources at that time. So that will be next Saturday from 12:30 to 2:30 up at the pool.
Counselor Lozad?
I, I spoke to several business owners, and, you know, they're the backbone of our community, and amazed on just how committed they are to our committed, community. And, you know, it's not, obviously, it's not good, but they're committed to move forward, every single one that I spoke to. And it was very encouraging to see just the strength that's, that we have. And that's it.
I just wanted to, and, and there's some people up here that know that, we received $5,000 worth of donated gift cards from Walmart. And they virtually, instantaneously, once the question was, was asked, is there anything that the foundation can do to support us? And so we've, we've got $5,000 in credit with them for the purchase of, you know, supplies needed for recovery efforts. And, and that's just, you know, the, the kinds of things that, that people do to support communities. So, you know, like Ben and Jerry's, like, like the individuals, like the local businesses, it's, you know, we're, we're grateful.
Yeah, no, and I, I would just add to the clerk, we had, she and I heard from someone who lives in Maine now, who used to live in Barry, who, so the, the outpouring has really been remarkable. And, and I just, you know, my final word would just be to the, the staff who've been amazing. And I think, you know, people don't realize it, it's, you know, it's easy to, you know, we see the contributions of fire, police, DPW. I mean, they've been absolutely heroic. And, and our facilities crew is starting to, to do some things that we, you know, they don't, we don't normally ask them to do, and they say, no problem. But, you know, I don't want it to get lost. You know, Janet on the FEMA, Dawn on the contracting, making sure we're going to get reimbursed for this, that she's going to be fine. Stephanie's taken on, just helping coordinate the volunteers. Rick's been helping with website stuff, getting, you know, making sure we have, you know, just the forums, the website ready to populate. So it is, it is a full team effort in, in the absolute sense of the word. Like, everybody who works for the city of Barry is directly contributing to our recovery. So I just, you know, I, I want that recognition to, to the people who are, you know, doing the actual work. We see a lot of them. We see, we see the people on the streets who are doing it, police, fire, and DPW. But just recognize that there are a lot of people working at Alumni Hall, City Hall, that are working just as hard as well. And so we're very grateful to, to all of them. I mean, there's a, there's a just great people here. And they're doing everything they've been asked to do.
I, I will also add that, as your comment about the, the person in Maine who reached out to us, we've had people drive up from as far away as New Jersey with their food trucks and park. They, they call us and say, where's the best place for us to park and feed people? And we've had people in the north end. We've had people up at the auditorium feeding the people that are housed there, feeding the public safety people that, that are working out of that space. They just, they show up, and they're like, we'll be here till our food's gone. And, you know, so that's just the kind of, you know, Joe has eaten, how much pizza have you eaten, Joe? They're getting lots of pizza sent.
So what's the salad next?
But, but, but people are, are so supportive.
Well, that outpouring of support is something I, I know we're definitely going to want to get, get as much of and need as much of. And, and I just think about how much, everybody must be running on fumes and adrenaline and, and just dealing with the stress of anxiety, not only of your work, but caring about all the people that you care about and all the, all the, all the calls that you're getting and all that you're sponging up from other people. Just take care of yourselves. And I think to Counselor Derry's point, you know, take, taking advantage of those mental health resources. I know, I tried to get back to, just to try to review a contract in, in my day job, and my mind just couldn't do it. It wasn't there. So, but I will say, I got the biggest stress relief ever, in that I had a long scheduled dog, scheduled to come. And so I have a new puppy that arrived yesterday. And that's, so I have a therapy dog, therapy dog right there.
I regret my dog.
We saw each other as Nicholas is walking his dog.
People are already moving in a burial.
Yeah. So, but seriously, everybody take care of yourself so you can take care of other people. And, and I know we're gonna, we're gonna bound, build back better, right? So, all right.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourned.
It's a motion in the second at six thirty. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good night, all.